Thank you, may be seated. Wait till everyone is quiet and ready. Thank you. Deanna, this time would you call the roll? Commissioner Vaughn?
Here.
Commissioner Hanna?
Here.
Commissioner McCall?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hausberg?
Here.
Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
City Manager Mims?
Recording in progress.
City Attorney Mora?
Present.
Captain Michael Leiner?
Here.
Fire Chief Jeffrey Davison?
Here.
IT Consultant Brian McCarthy?
Here.
So, at this time, I want to thank all of you who have come to every meeting and sent us emails, called us, texted, everything that you've done. We appreciate all sides, everyone that's here tonight, because I know that, at the bottom line, is everyone loves Indiana Rock speech. And with that, what we're going to start tonight is our discussion, and I'm going to have Randy Mora, who will go through the draft like we did last time. And I would appreciate all of you to give us the opportunity to have discussion on this. And once we're done, then I will open it up to public comment. Okay? Randy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, commissioners for the opportunity to work with you on this. As you'll recall, last month, we had a work session where we talked in more abstract terms about general policy directions this body wished to move into as it relates to short-term rentals and their regulation and operation in the city. During that discussion, I received consensus direction from you, extensive public feedback, both in the form of written submissions and statements made via Zoom or in person. I took all of that into account, and with that, have produced an ordinance for your review and discussion tonight. The goal of this is to get us to a final product, so that when we get to first reading, the process has been distilled to what, at least what policy direction we really do think we want to go, not, and you having the opportunity to meaningfully deliberate on ordinances that are of great importance in your community. Since we had that workshop, there has also been another development in the form of legislation that's been filed, Senate Bill 714, I believe is the number. Senate Bill 714's been filed that would change some of the landscape as it relates to short-term rentals. For example, we had extensive discussions about what the registration fee would be and what an appropriate amount is. According to the Senate Bill if passed, and it is only proposed now, it is not the law, but were it to be adopted, that would be capped at $50 per registration, or 100 for collective registrations. That would be state statute. The statute does explicitly contemplate the power of municipality to have a registration program and operate it and condition it on various elements. Some of the things in Senate Bill 714 that it addresses, it addresses that preemption and explicitly stating, "A local law ordinance or regulation may require the registration of vacation rentals with a local vacation rental registration program." So illuminating to the extent some litigants have argued that, well, that's not clear in there, it's not stated in making it more explicit. Local governments may charge a fee of no more than $50. Registration can't be any more frequently than once per year. As a condition of registration, there's a list of things we may only require. Of course, if this were to be adopted, we would have to make sure that anything is harmonized. And then it also has some of what the contents for an application of a license can be. And finally, a note to us, in addition to regulating, it independently regulates advertising platforms, and it also has a provision for the Division of Business and Professional Regulation to revoke or refuse to issue or renew suspended licenses. What I would say is, this is again proposed legislation that was filed, I believe, February 12th or 13th. Session does not start until Tuesday. We are not in session. The committees have been meeting. Session runs from March 7th to May 5th. So there's plenty of time for the provisions therein to be amended, either be adopted, rejected, die in committee, any number of things. My advice to you at this stage is to continue to forge ahead with whatever policy direction you desire to move in, and if we need to adapt to the state of the law, we will do that as we have in the other instance that's been brought to our attention. So I do want to make sure that the body is aware of that in the event that informs any of your decision-making. As the mayor alluded to, you have a draft ordinance. It is proposed. This is not first reading. This is in fact a work session. So for those members of the public who are lucky enough to be unfamiliar with our process, this is, what, this body, as I stated at the last meeting, can only meet and deliberate about substantive policy in an open meeting like this. So they've not been meeting with each other in the intervening month. This is their first time to reconvene, and that intervening month, and I've been working with staff to get this work product to them. And so, and this is not, what you see proposed here will not go into effect tomorrow or anytime in the near future in terms of days or weeks. What will happen tonight is we'll make sure that this draft is what you folks want, based on feedback and your own thoughts. We will, just as we did last time, go page by page or be section by section, make sure we haven't overlooked anything, and that if you wish to address anything. Once this body has had an opportunity to deliberate and provide whatever consensus direction you intend to provide, we will open it to the public. Last time, the way we did that was we alternated between Zoom and, oh man, that is a handsome guy there. We will alternate between Zoom and those members in person to discuss the contents of, and policy direction. And then, at a later date, we will come back for a first, a first reading and then a second reading. It takes time. And so with that, Mayor, if you're comfortable with it, I'm prepared to proceed through the ordinance. The first three pages are the whereas clauses. Those are there to substantiate, as far as the positions that you, and policy direction you're moving in. I'll just more broadly ask if there's any feedback specific to the whereas clauses other than just ribbing me for how many there are?
You're off the point there. Do you want to have anything for breaking of the whereas?
All right. So then, so then, moving past that, we go to the definitions section. Some of the revisions of note, looking at the definition of a bedroom. One of the, one of the citizen feedback points that was raised, and I think feedback that was well taken, was the unique feature of having cottages in your community, and some that have not historically had incorporated closets, and a closet is part of the definition of a bedroom. And so there was language provided that, for purposes of this article, "Staff shall have discretion in the registration process to determine the number of bedrooms within traditional cottages that exist within the city but may not have a built-in closet going to their historical design." So there will be some discretion there. It does allow for that, not work some kind of legal fiction where they have no bedrooms in a cottage just by virtue of the absence of closets. So that was one substantive edit there. Another was, "A property shall not under owner occupy." Some feedback, both from this commission and the public, adding language that a property shall not be deemed owner-occupied, where the owner of the property allows a friend, acquaintance, employee, or other person not considered a family member, as defined there, to occupy the property unaccompanied by a family member. So if I have a property and I just say, "Phil, you can go ahead. You're not paying me, but you can use it for purposes of this," that's not owner-occupied. The owner is not, in fact, occupying the premises. So that's some of the more substantive changes within the definitions. But before we move on from definitions, are there any, is there any remaining feedback or concerns that any member of the commission has?
Any questions for Randy? No. Eric, no?
All right. The next one is 18-201, the scope. This as written applies to vacation rentals within each of the city zoning districts. There is a narrow carve-out for, and I believe there is only one property meeting this description, for properties within the CT zoning district that are historically timeshare properties, given in part the administrative, one, that they have historically existed in this way and do not, have not historically presented an issue in that regard based on their intensity of use, but also the idea that every individual owner of a one-week interest, one, I don't know that they could get to three rentals in a, you know, 30-day period to get there, but if they intend to register in that fashion, it could work somewhat of an absurdity or challenge. And so there was a carve-out maybe for that based on the historical use of the property and the issues addressed in the ordinance. At this stage, I know there was substantial citizen feedback on which districts should or should not be incorporated, and Coke versus Red Bull, or Red Bull with Fog High, I don't know. But whatever you folks think most appropriate as far as the scope of this in your zoning districts, is there any feedback, concern you wish to address now that you see it in place?
Do you want to start?
Is this the only carve-out for CT zone as far as the ordinance goes?
Presently. Ultimately, you folks decide what the carve-outs are. If you want, I know that there was substantial discussion and debate last night about whether the CT district as a whole is best fitted into this regime or not. Ultimately, that's a decision for you folks to make as the policymakers. I understand the, you know, the comments made about the historical and traditional uses of that district and how they may be inherently distinct. I also know that there was feedback to the contrary, saying all of our, all of our districts suffer these ills, and ultimately, how that's resolved is up to the five of you.
What, can I?
Yes.
One of the things that I was asked, I'm taking, I provided a copy to tell us as a reminder, the current ordinance that we have, the limits of where it applies, and I just get it to as a reminder. Basically, the east side of Gulf Boulevard, everything north of Fifth. And the only thing that's, excuse me, that's clear on the east side of Gulf Boulevard are the commercial properties that front Gulf Boulevard. So that's where the existing ordinance applies. The way this is drafted right now would apply in the entire city. So that's, just remember the difference between the current ordinance and what you're talking about now.
I think you remember that when we discussed this, we were very hesitant. When we discussed this at the last meeting, we were very hesitant on putting all the districts together. And once we made a decision to put all the districts together, I know I rethought it, and I've had a lot of feedback from residents. And my thought, and Joe, you can also, and all of you make comments about it, is I think the best thing for the, for this ordinance is to just exclusively do the residential district that we have, near ordinance. And what, what do you, all of you have any comments about that?
I think it's certainly worth considering.
Go ahead, Joe.
Joe?
Go ahead.
Please, Joe.
Just one kind of question I had that kept coming up, and I saw we got a couple carve-outs. Can maybe Randy be best, give me a better understanding on how this impacts our condos that line the Gulf? Because they have their own HOA, they have their own rules, they have. So how does, how does this dovetail into what they're already dealing with, I guess?
Excellent question. To the extent they have their own condominium association, homeowners association, and I don't mean the IRB, I mean, specific to a unit or building, the city doesn't enforce their homeowners restrictions. That's for them to enforce. That's why they have their own condo boards or associations. They are responsible for administering any restrictive covenants they have in their own documents. As far as how this applies in its present iteration, it applies in those districts. The ordinance as written applies in those districts. There is a narrow, another narrow carve-out in the current draft, in the parking section, where it says, "We're not going to build a giant condo building that has a, you know, parking-by-unit-whatever arrangement."
Right.
Suddenly erect a new garage, or somehow alter, I know that's a third rail statement, so I'll just say, somehow alter their parking arrangement to accommodate the restrictions or requirements of this ordinance. That's really the only other exception maybe within this. What I would say is, to the extent, for example, if I own Unit 143 in this condominium, and I'm the only person who wishes short-term rental, that doesn't somehow violate my restrictions, I would have to register Unit 143 with the city and be subject to all the same inspections and everything else that go with renting that unit, subject to, and I know the fire chief has made some exposition about how that might be slightly different, because there's shared elements and baseline safety requirements in the building and that. But generally speaking, as written, it applies to those units as well. Thank you.
Can I ask for elaboration on that? If, so, just quickly, so then, does that mean that if we include the CT zone, that basically, if we, if we enforce, if we apply this to the CT zone, does that mean that it basically allows the state to, again, preempt the decisions of, say, the HOAs and condos? Like, right now, if we don't touch it, can the condos make their own rules? The HOAs are there, and the condos make their own rules?
The honest answer to that is, I don't know, because that's not what applies. What the condos, I understand there may be some, and I know, and part of the "I don't know" is I know there have been bills proposed that have limited HOA restrictions as they relate to short-term rentals, and I don't know if this has been adopted. Because frankly, whether or not they can adopt them doesn't change what we do. And to the extent you're talking about it as a question of preemption, we, our powers are derivative, excuse me, derived from the state. The state can take those away regardless of what we do. They can preempt us tomorrow on most things if they so desire. And so whether or not we adopt something doesn't somehow imbue the legislature with more power to preempt it. It inherently has that power. So we're not granting them some leeway in that regard. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's at least how I was understanding it.
Yeah, but it does, but it would not immediately allow for it?
I don't know what is in your statement.
Short-term rentals?
Well.
If they're restricted by an HOA?
If they're restricted by an HOA, again, that, to me, that's just beyond our calculus. We're here as the city, and we are enforcing our code of ordinances, our charter, our comp plan. But restrictive covenants within deeds are for the property owners and their associations to administer, not for the state. I mean, I've lived in an apartment. I've been fined for too many balloons on my door and other things. You know, it's, that ultimately, that was a function of the rules of that building, not the city I was living in at the time.
Phil, do you need something to add to that?
Well, I think, you know, I'm the one that sort of brought it up, and it's like, let's just do the whole island. Let's not separate it from residential to the CT zone. I think that most of the people in the CT zone already operate by a set of rules, because they're, they're used to renting to short-term people. So they've got their noise under control, they've got, you know, their problem customers under control. The only concern I have is then we're missing the opportunity for inspection.
Greg, do you want to say anything to that? Because we've had some discussion.
The only opportunity we have for inspection in the current ordinance is in May. There's not a required inspection. Now, we, since November, since the November meeting for all new vacation rentals, we've required, the new ones to be inspected before we issued the business license. But we don't have, we don't have the ability inside of City Hall to inspect properties on the west side of the road anyway, because they're not covered by this ordinance. Now, and the chief, our chief, can speak up for his department. My understanding from the fire chief is, you know, in there, maybe he can give an update at some point about their ordinance and where it is. But their intent is to, they're going to inspect all vacation rentals throughout the whole city. So there's a difference in what we're doing and what they're going to do. And currently, as it stands, as we sit today, none of our, none of my, of the people that work for me are not involved in the west side of the road, because the ordinance we have does not apply over there.
But they will have to have a business.
They should, and I would just say publicly, we're aware that there's a large number of vacation rentals on the west side of the road that don't, do not have business licenses. But that'll be, that'll be addressed either way. If you adopt, whether you include it or not, we have plans to address the lack of business licenses with properties on the west side of the road.
What, Joe?
Probably one of my largest concerns, because if you remember, I was not a proponent of the CT zone at all. I guess one of my concerns is if we don't have any limitations, be it occupancy, be it whatever. Like all our cottages, everything we've tried to save over the last 10 years, they're getting taxed out of the world at highest and best use. Their insurance is through the roof. They're going to sell out. There's some, right? It happens. So do we want developers to come in, like have come into other cities and put in 10-bedroom, 10-bath Airbnbs along the beach? You know, fit, 50 feet by 100 feet type of building in that area?
I would just advise that that is sort of, development permissions and development requirements are separate and distinct from regulating the operation within that structure.
Yes.
Think Manager Mims, if you have something to share with that?
Yeah, just to clarify part of it, Joe, is that particularly on the CT, really, particularly on the CT, you're only allowed to develop a certain number of units based on the size of property that you have. So that, so to take the, I just wanted to keep that in perspective, to take the view that I can take my 50-foot lot and cram as many as I need, there's a square footage requirement for each unit, so automatically you're limited on having. So where that happens usually in Florida is where people go in, they take a residential property or an unzoned property, and they build mega house with 20 rooms.
Right.
Because there's, there's limits inside of the city. It's all based on square footage per unit. So the, the idea that on the west side of the road, that somebody's going to take a 50-foot lot and you're going to build, you're going to build, you're going to put 20 units there. You're not putting 20 units there, but you have to have square footage that goes along with that. So that really, that really can't happen.
Appreciate the clarification. As I said, my, my original, that was obviously one of my concerns. The, as far as my original thought process, the CT zone is with the cottages, with the different variations of property, the condos. I think it operates the way it should, to be honest. Now, we have some problem children over there, obviously, some, you know, some houses that may need to deal from a compliance standpoint.
Well, and we've been made aware of those too.
Right. I mean, that's, do, if we don't include it, does the city have the teeth to rectify those situations?
Greg?
What are the situations?
Just if there is noise, trash, you know, some of the same things and issues we're dealing with on the east side in the neighborhoods, you know, if they're happening to, and houses that are not complex.
Yeah, we have the tools, like our current ordinance, we do, we do deal with it.
Okay. I just didn't want to leave this.
Okay.
Right.
Do we have a consensus? What is the will of the commission? Can we separate this ordinance that we're working on as far as the residential part of the community? Do we have a consensus on that, or is there some other way, something else that you would prefer to do? Yes?
I think that Joe brought up a good point. There are a lot of single-family homes over there. There are developers coming in now, and they're building structures specifically to have Airbnbs. Originally, when the short-term rental law came into effect, condos that had HOAs were excluded, and they may have changed that since I slept last, depending on the way they change things up that are anywhere to happen in time. But I do think that it's important to call into this residential zoning that we're working on right now, is if it's a single-family home in the CT district, it should fall under the same laws. If not, we don't have any real power to factor into it. So maybe if you do another cutout, maybe it specifies that unless they're covered by an HOA, i.e. a condo. Is that simplified?
I think that makes it more difficult.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Because that's what I'm saying.
It's his last one.
He's just trying to throw a bomb.
That's just how I see it. So do what you want.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're obviously already, I mean, there's currently a cottage that was torn down on the beach that's being built into two separate buildings that are condos. And that's fine, you know, that's what they do. But there was a cottage on the beach, and now there are two big buildings. So Joe's concern is reasonable, given that that's sort of part of the fabric and the nature of the town that everybody loves. So do you want to perhaps not encourage short-term rental development on the beach side where the cottages are? That's, that is certainly something to consider, and maybe it's best to do less than more right now in terms of addressing, maybe that's a problem to address for another day if it is in fact a problem.
All right. Do we have a consensus then, with everybody, that we will separate the residential? Okay, and, and the district, the residential district? I want to make sure that's clear in the document.
Speak up, please.
What we are saying, if you're standing and you can't hear us, there's three chairs in the front that you can move up to, if somebody would like to move up to the front.
They can't hear back there.
Okay, all right. Are we clear on that?
Yeah, just separate.
Does everybody separate, okay?
Yeah.
Are we all clear on this? Yes, okay, all right, thank you.
One moment. I want to make it clear. So for those who couldn't hear, the issue being discussed as to, is the scope of where this ordinance will apply. There seems to be a general direction towards excising the CT district from that scope. My ask of you would be to make clear presently, as Manager Mims indicated a moment ago, your present ordinance applies in the residential district and in that area outlined in blue on the map he provided you, and does not include, for example, the business triangle or business district, however, I know different people use different nomenclature, or the PUD that exists to the south there. And so are you, is it your direction that we include the same scope as the current ordinance? Or something, is it everything except CT, or is it just those residential districts? I want to make sure that the, you know, that when we come back on first reading, we are clear on what it is that you're seeking, where you intend to have this applied.
I would say just residential, because that's essentially where the issue is for everybody. So, you know, I mean, they're zoned separately for a reason.
I agree.
I agree. So would their registration fee stay $10 on the CT zone?
They would only be paying for a business tax receipt, because they're not going to be subjected to the vacation rental registration process.
Okay.
As contemplated in this ordinance.
Okay.
Whatever the sum of that business tax receipt is, a different question, but it would not be the same sum, because they are not pursuing a vacation rental registration.
Okay, let's proceed to the next. So the consensus is, always, first included in this ordinance?
Got it. The next section is the, the consensus direction was for the scope of this to apply in the existing scope of the present short-term rental ordinance, which is limited to the residential districts. Again, this is the, this is not the first or second reading, but it is direction for what will be presented. The next is the enforcement section, 18-202. Another point of feedback that was substantial following the last meeting was concerns or questions about, I don't remember us talking about fine amounts. I don't remember, you know, a discussion about, you know, the particulars. And at the time during that workshop, I said, "I just want to know what potential penalties or provisions you intend to have as part of your enforcement." There was general consensus direction that, of course, finds as contemplated There was general consensus direction that, of course, finds as contemplated in Chapter 162 of the Florida statutes, but as well, potential suspension and potential revocation. And so, I codified that general understanding, but what I've done is couched it in this draft, much in the same way that most code ordinances operate, which is you will have a quasi judicial hearing before a special magistrate, and we've received RFP responses and we're working towards that stage, but once you have that special magistrate, the better practice, rather than federing them to a very specific penalty every single time, is to allow discretion based on enumerated criteria. And so, we have enumerated criteria, and the way it reads is, "The magistrate's decision whether to impose a fine and the amount of the fine shall remain subject to the provisions, considerations, and limitations set forth in Florida statute," which are the first three on this list, by the way, "as well as the following factors: the gravity of the violation, any action taken by the violator or property owner to correct the violation, any previous violations committed by the violator, the property owner or designated responsible party's efforts to resolve or avoid the violation, the temporal duration of the violation, how long did it go on, for sustained or intermittent, whether the violation was a function of the property's owner's action or inaction, or those of their transient guests, any evidence of the property owner's adjudication or admission to violations of a similar nature in the city, any evidence of deliberate misrepresentation by the owners to the city or its agents in connection with the violation, and any documentation from an online rental platform of any warning, review, censure, suspension, penalty, or prohibition of the property owner or owner's use of its platform for the purposes of offering properties as transient public lodging establishments as a violation of that platform's policies, procedures, or terms of service." And so, those are the factors that would be considered in imposing, determining whether to impose a fine and the amount of the fine. Then, provided a fine occurs, it has here upon a third adjudicated or admitted violation of the city's code of ordinances, within a 12-month period at the same rental unit or property, the magistrate shall have the discretion, again, it is not automatic, it is discretionary, to temporarily suspend the property owner or owner's vacation rental registration for the property or unit at issue. The magistrate's decision to suspend the, and I'll catch that, Springer's error of apostrophe S, decision whether to suspend the vacation rental registration and for what duration shall remain subject to those same factors enumerated in the fine factor. Those same things will inform whether suspension is appropriate. And again, the spirit of that goes to some of the discussions this commission and the public had about, you know, if my trash is out two or three times versus somebody's, you know, launching cannon fire from the backyard in the morning, or should those be treated equally and that discretion is afforded there? The final here, I made it explicit in part because there was a lot of misapprehension about how this was worked, and so I wanna read this language, "Nothing in this provision shall be construed to permit for the suspension of a registration based on mere complaint or alleged and disputed or unadjudicated violations of the city's code of ordinances. The magistrate's decision whether to suspend vacation rental registration and for what duration shall be subject to the same considerations for the imposition of a fine set forth in this article." So, making it clear that just because somebody calls a violation in, does not count to that tally. It has to be either admitted in the form of a clear admission or a paid violation, or an undisputed paid violation, or a magistrate adjudicating a disputed violation and it being upheld. So, that's the criteria for that, and then it also provides how that license returns upon the suspension of the period. And then finally, revocation is upon a third imposed and legally sustained suspension. So, if you appeal it and it's overturned, that doesn't count. A third imposed and legally sustained suspension within a three-year period, the magistrate, again, has that direction based on the same criteria. And so, that's how that, to the extent there was a lot of question, I would say this is where the most language was added to the draft from what you saw last time, where the detail really was supplemented substantially. So, I wanted to make sure you're clear on that, and again, I welcome any feedback, questions, concerns you may have.
Any questions for Randy? Joe?
I think you're speaking directly to me.
All good.
Thank you, Randy.
All right. We'll move ahead.
All right. The next is appeals. I don't really, I would tell you, that's not really something that you should probably mess with, it's just an aggrieved party, it acknowledges the statutory right to an appeal and going to the circuit court and how that works. So, it's really a recitation of statutory language, and again, that's a function of due process. I understand for some neighbors, residents, people observing things, the legal process is often frustrating, but having, acknowledging people's due process rights and abiding by them is how this all works. I have litigated many a code enforcement appeal, just for the benefit of this group and those present. If somebody challenges a code enforcement adjudication, the way that works is it goes, especially one of the special magistrate, it goes to the circuit court, so the courthouse, the judge handles that appeal, and they look to whether, one, whether they were afforded sufficient due process, which is notice and an opportunity to be heard, two, whether the decision abides by the essential requirements of law. If you're enforcing against them for noise, what you're reading from the fence height provision, you've deviated from the essential requirements of law, it's going to whether or not you're reading from the right sheet of music for the violation at issue. And then the third is that it is supported by competent and substantial evidence, so they're going to look to the record. On appeal, you don't get to argue new things, it's confined to whatever, whatever either party, city and violator alike, have put into the record. So, that appeal provision is an explicit recognition of that legal process, that's not something we're creating, it's an acknowledgement of an existing process. The next page is, we're on page eight of 23 from the draft that I've circulated. The next part is the registration requirement. For those of you reading it in a color printed version, there's a few highlightings in yellow, those are just placeholders based on how this process moves along, noting that, you know, if this is adopted in June, those dates will likely have to change, and we wanna be mindful of also what's practical. The next is the vacation rental registration fee. This was a substantive change from the last draft. You'll notice in reviewing this that there is not an explicit number in the vacation rental registration fee. Generally speaking, especially keeping an eye on the way the legislature continues to preempt or otherwise regulate registration fees, not just for short term rentals but otherwise, your better bet is to have your fees in a resolution, separate from an ordinance. A resolution doesn't require two readings and a newspaper ad and all of these things. And so, if, for example, we adopt a sum, and the last sum that I recall, and please forgive me, I don't have the note in front of me at the moment, was approximately $400, you're not gonna see that $400 anywhere in this draft. It would be in a resolution that would go with it. But let's say we adopt this, and then that Senate bill that I told you about is adopted, we would just have to do a resolution amending our fee structure from the $200 or $400 to $50. I would just ask, while we're there though, while there will be a resolution, it is going to need an amount in it, are you still comfortable at that amount, subject to everything else I just said? So, the $400 is the rental registration fee, is that still what you're thinking based on the draft, especially because it'll have to be in a subsequent enactment?
Is that in a multi-unit, how is that, is that 400 per unit regardless of the number of units? Sorry. Is that 400 per unit?
Yeah, the question was, in a multi-unit, where you're registering multiple units, is that 400 per unit or per building? I would say, and certainly that can, it would warrant addressing that explicitly in the resolution that comes with it, as contemplated, it would be per unit or structure. So, if you have, the reason I'm saying unit or structure, if you have a condo where you have, let's say, six units that are owned by separate people, each of those is going to be separate. You folks have not given me any instruction thus far that if it's Jude owns six units in that building and he wants to rent all six, whether there's some kind of cumulative cap. Thus far, the explicit direction actually was discussed some briefly, and it was, just make it per unit, make it clean, and that's fine, because we're still gonna have to inspect those, we're still gonna have to register them and fill out paperwork as to each, and so the instruction thus far has been, every unit pays those $400.
In this proposed legislation, though, there is a cap for multiple units, is that correct?
Correct. In the current draft of Senate Bill 714, it's $50 for one or 100 for a group. That is not a dichotomy or distinction made in this current draft.
Yeah. So, I don't know if that's something you guys wanna consider, you know, if you've got 16 units, is that 400 times 16, or is it?
Just for the benefit of all, and especially our resident tenants, please give me the mic.
Sorry. Yeah, here, in my opinion, if you're, if you're registering unit A, B, and C, you know, those are three different revenue-producing units, whether you own them or three different people own them, makes no difference. So, I would say it would be per unit, and I'm okay with the 400 at this point, unless the state tells us different.
And understanding that that's less of a concern based on the current direction you're moving, where it's only applicable in the same, in the current districts and not within the CT district, for example, where you're more apt to have multiple units. Now, you will have, you may have property owners who have multiple structures, or an LLC that has multiple, you know, multiple structures, and so that can still, you can still have multiple registrations, but I just, to the extent that your concern is unit 110, unit 115, less have to see that based on the policy direction you're presently going.
Yeah.
All right. With that, the next is the registration process and contents.
So, that was a consensus?
Consensus to sustain in the current direction, no changes.
Thank you.
The next part is 18-206 on vacation rental registration process and contents. The most that I did here was just try and synthesize, to the extent things were repeated across sections, try and organize them under subheadings, that a registration application is required, what's part of the submission, what is part of the registration contents, and it goes into that. Now, there is, again, there is some language in the statute on what goes in registration with the DDPR and otherwise, and if there is deviation, we'll need to harmonize them, but presently, that's just a proposal. So, I don't have anything specifically that I had of concern for your input here. There were some limited additions, ADD, IT, IONs additions, one of which was adding things to the list of items that would appear on an exterior site plan, for example, an outdoor kitchen, and other things, again, based on general feedback, but other than that, I did not make any substantial edits here, unless, of course, any of you saw anything in here you wanted to address. All right, with that, we'll move to page 10. It makes it explicit, we're still within registration requirements, just making clear that complete submission is required. Somebody sending you, like, I put my name, I put my address, that's all I'm gonna do, process it, that it won't be processed if it's incomplete. And it also clarifies how to dispute, I think it's complete, the city's telling me no. If that needs resolution, that'll go to the magistrate and provides a timeline for resolving that. But the last thing that was added here is to say that a completed vacation rental registration shall not be approved until the subject property or unit has been, has completed and passed the inspection process set forth in this article. So, the registration process explicitly contemplates the inspection process. I will tell you, one of the provisions in Senate Bill 714 that may impact this, depending on how it proceeds and whether or not it is in fact amended in any substantial way, is it does provide a sort of automatic approval period if something is not approved within 15 days, and we would have to harmonize and determine how, you know, one, it all depends on how it's written by the time it gets across the finish line, if it gets across the finish line, but that is something I wanna make sure you're aware of, that it's kind of about the, sort of the inverse of the pocket veto. If you haven't taken action on it, within 15 days, it's deemed to prove on a registration under the proposed legislation. So, other than that, are there any other questions within 18-206, questions or concerns? Next is 18-207. Yeah, that has the hat tip to inspections, inspections as a provision are independently appear in 18-210. So, we're not quite there, but it sort of acknowledges that process exists.
And this may be too specific, but just something as I was reading through it, thinking out, you know, if you're, the way our registration process works, it sounds like you are currently the owner, you gotta buy the deed, you gotta do that, to get to that inspection, right? Which can make or break a house. I would like to see us have some sort of opportunity or option, if I'm a prospective buyer on a home here, Samus Snowbird, and I do wanna rent it sometimes when I'm gone, can we have a provision for the city to do an inspection on that property to make sure it's compliant?
I totally understand your point. I'm trying to think through the practicalities of that. You know, if I'm the seller, likely I'd be incentivized to give access to the property. I might not, which is part of it. The other, you know, the other concern is, I have a little reticence about the reliance element of that, if they're going to then claim that, you know, I made a $1.2 million investment or $400,000 investment based on a preliminary inspection, and, you know, to say nothing of title insurance and how all that fits in. But I hear that feedback, and I welcome whatever direction you folks want.
I would say that just as one gets an inspection before one buys a property for any other reason, you just fold that right into it, say, hey, you know, I'm thinking about buying this for a rental, so, you know, is it compliant?
Right, and that's done private.
Yeah, exactly.
You're not bringing in a government official.
Exactly.
To determine whether or not you should buy a property and it's consistent with, you know, flood, and when most people have a private entity, they hire to do their forepost or whatever you call it, and if you wish to, or maybe that creates an opportunity in the marketplace, I don't know, for those private inspectors to say, oh, I'm familiar with it and do that. I would have some hesitation based precisely on how otherwise works, on making that a duty or burden of the city.
I agree.
So, no consensus to add that to this, is that correct?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. With that, 18-207, modification, change of ownership, sort of narrowed the amended registration and what would require, what would be, would require new registration, most specifically, transferring ownership would require new registration. Any concerns or feedback on 18-207?
What about with upgrades to the property? Do you do it again then?
As written, there's no amended registration required. I hesitate when you use the word upgrades, because if you're talking about permitting, well, for sure, changes, but if I put in any backsplash, I might not be letting the city know, and I might consider that upgrade. But when you talk about, let's say they added a floor or added a stairwell, stairwell or a wall, all of that, those kinds of structural changes are going to be inspected as part of affirmative process. I don't know if that would necessarily trigger a new registration, but of course, if you folks wish to say, like, the addition of a unit or something as triggering that, I imagine that if you're adding a unit to the property, you're wanting to, you may be, depending on what district you're in, wishing to get the occupancy that might flow from that unit, you're gonna need it inspected and approved in that part too.
Otherwise, you're not compliant.
All good. Move ahead.
All right, 18-208 is duration of the rental registration. You folks have directed one year, I know there's other communities that do it every other year, this is sort of, you know, administrative process. Ultimately, the current Senate bill that we've been referencing says, one year is the absolute most frequent you can make it, you can't make it every six months or something like that, nor do I, nor am I suggesting that you've expressed a desire to do so, but that's the, you know, the minimum is one. If you wish to make that period longer, please let me know. Changes there? All right. Next is just a very brief renewal provision, each vacation rental owner has a duty to ensure he, she renews his or its registration annually prior to expiration date of the previous vacation rental registration, just sort of a, hey, it's on you to make sure you're current, we're not your property manager that night. The next is the inspection provision, 18-210, it says to verify compliance with the Florida Building Code, Fire and Life Safety Codes, applicable to the property, and to verify the interior and exterior plans that are submitted aligned, an inspection will be done, and the city will endeavor to coordinate with the owner and complete the inspection process prior to the expiration of any existing registration period. However, only as to renewing applicants, if the availability causes a delay, there's some provision there. It also explicitly contemplates that we will do this in conjunction with representative of the fire district servicing the city, and to the extent necessary, the building official or designated agent thereof. Presently, that's the county, again, that's left open, so we're not having to change it, just if we change how our building, who our building official is or how those services are rendered.
I think the chief wants to.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I said, a question to clarify.
Yes, ma'am. I just had a question to clarify the wording in 18-210.
Yes, sir.
For Randy. It's just to verify compliance with the Florida Building Code, comma, Fire and Life Safety Codes. But I'd like to be a little bit more specific to say, the Florida Fire Prevention Code, latest adopted, adopted edition. the Florida Fire Prevention Code, latest adopted, adopted edition. And the Florida Fire Prevention Code encompasses NFPA 1, NFPA 101, and any amendments to those, those.
Understood, those.
Those codes. So, the Florida Fire Prevention Code, you could use that, that encompasses those three things. And we always wanna use the latest.
Yes, sir.
Adopted edition. And then I had a question on how, you know, we wanna make sure that for the owners that we make it as simple as possible for them. And it says in here that when they do their application, they have to provide proof that they have had their inspections done and things. And I just wanna make sure that we spell it out so that it's easier for, however we work it out together, we wanna make sure they, it's almost like one-stop shop, right, where they need to do their application or registration, get their inspections done, and that we're coordinated with you. So they're not making another phone call or another inspection, or we could do it all together. But to spell it in there that they would need to have their completed inspection in order to get their application approved.
So, okay, so sort of reiterating the point that a completed vacation rental registration shall not be approved until the subject property or unit has completed and passed the inspection process. That's explicitly stated above. You want that restated, you're suggesting that be restated within 18-210? I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what you're suggesting.
If, okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, if that could spell out separately from the inspections that the city requires, spell out the annual life safety inspection.
Now, I understand you better, thank you. Making sure the life safety is specifically called out as part of that. Okay. Does anybody on the commission have any concerns with the chief's suggested or requested revisions relating to the language of the Florida Fire Prevention Code in its latest adopted edition and specifically calling out the fire life safety code inspection as part of that process?
No, I think it's a good idea. It's a good idea. Everybody okay? Okay, good.
All right, that's consensus approval on that. Any other concerns within the, within the inspection provision, 18-210? Next provision is 18-211. Specifically acknowledges that when title to a registered vacation rental is transferred due to sale or otherwise, the new owner shall file a new registration application. Basically, if there's a new owner, it's gotta change. There's no, you don't automatically inherit, inherit that license. You've gotta submit. The next is more of a legal pronouncement, it's to vested rights. Section subsequent to that is 18-213, rendering it a violation to knowingly provide calls or misleading information in connection with this process. The next is on advertising. There was some feedback on this. I wanna make sure you're clear about what this presently says. No vacation rental may be advertised as an event venue for gatherings likely or intended to draw attendance in excess of the permissible occupancy and parking restrictions on the property, such as weddings, corporate retreats, or film productions. So not advertising in a way that says, you know, perfect for your dot-dot-dot, expected to, you know, draw that occupancy. Some of the citizen feedback you've received in the interim is, and we talked about the potential need to harmonize these things, but you do have a, Greg, I always get it wrong, it's temporary use permit, is that right? Some people refer to it as a special event permit, where if you intend to have a gathering in excess of 50 persons, you need to get a temporary use permit below that as a property owner, not necessarily. And so there was some concern in citizen feedback that, you know, as written, they're subject to all the same provisions as any other residential property is. And so that would be the same applicable provision. The other consistency with the rental registration, having that sort of, that language there posted, and then advertising violations, that any advertisements that don't contain that element, also, you know, that it's a violation not to have that. Again, there are some, in Senate Bill 714, there are some provisions that, depending on how it's phrased, and I'm monitoring, tracking, and looking at committees to determine whether they're characterizing that as a preemption, because there's some language about what DVPR can say about advertisements and hosting platforms and what their content is. But thus far, again, this is the language we would require on it. Any, any questions there? Or concerns within 18-214?
What happens if you advertise that it's good for gatherings?
It would be a violation of this code, which would be submitted to the magistrate for adjudication. Or, you know, or they would just come and remind someone to notice that, hey, you can't do that, oh, I didn't know, or fine, I'll fix it. You know, our, our goal through the code process is compliance. That is what code enforcement is about, is compliance. So it would be an attempt to achieve compliance for that, for prosecution. The next section, absent any feedback, we're on page 14 of 23. It's section 18-215, the duties of the vacation rental owner and responsible person. This was another area where I think some substantive restructuring and revision did occur. One of the more repeated points of feedback and public comment, and to some extent on this, on this dais as well, was the number of designated responsible persons and the practical limitations of availability. So this contemplates that instead of having up to one, you can have up to two responsible persons in addition to the property owner. And that, and what their availability must be. And the response time is to be responsive within an hour of notice. And it is a rebuttable presumption of a violation as against the owner and the primary designated responsible person jointly and separately in the event of a complaint or event where the city is unable to reach a secure response from the owner in the set time period. You can rebut that, in the law, rebuttable presumption is, this happened unless you can establish otherwise, establish otherwise to the satisfaction of elements being provided. And so you can rebut that of unanticipated exigency. Yes, I'm the designated responsible person. I had a family member have a cardiac event during that same hour. It wasn't neglect, it was, you know, happenstance, for example. Unanticipated exigency in Excal, we've got hurricane, or, you know, what have you, flood, or other exceptional circumstances justifying the unavailability of each identified responsible person, notwithstanding measures taken to ensure compliance. You know, I didn't know that, you know, ATC's network would be down due to some cataclysmic event, my phone was at the ready, I couldn't control it. Those sorts of things. So the next is served just as the provides that we can serve notices on the responsible person for purposes of reading the property owner, subject, of course, to any other legal notice requirements. So that is the responsible person portion. This duties of vacation rental owner is a little more between 18 and 216 and 217. There's a bit there, so I wanna take it in segments. Any concerns, feedback, proposed provisions concerning the responsible person that's sub A of 18-2-215? Okay, seeing none?
Okay.
The next is interior posting. The owner or responsible person shall provide the city and conspicuously post on the interior surface front door that who the responsible person is. And there isn't another section that mostly consolidates postings, but I did want that reiterated under the responsible person portion. Again, the response time is set forth there again. Redesignation, legal duties, just kinda, again, reiterating what the job means or what you're volunteering or serving for as a designated responsible person. Any other questions, concerns, revisions within 18-215? Okay, we're moving right along. We're on page 15 of 23. Maximum occupancy based on site capacity limitations. This, of course, was a substantive portion of our discussion last time. I attempted to, to the best of my ability, to synthesize the feedback you've given. And it provides, the maximum overnight occupancy of vacation rental units shall be stated in the form and shall be limited as follows. There is a sub one there that applies to the CT district. This house, just as last time, I apologize for not having removed it yet. But given your feedback at this point, that sub one would fall away from this draft. So you're left with sub two, which would become one. In all other zoning districts within the city, so we would say, I would call out the districts within which this applies. The maximum overnight occupancy shall be limited to two persons per bedroom, plus two additional persons may sleep in the common area. Regardless of the number of bedrooms in or on the property, the overnight occupancy shall not exceed a maximum number of, and there is a typo there, of 12 and 10. And I think that was a function of transposing things. But it should be 10 in 18-216, sub two. The initial, and that's, I think, just the one and two copy and clearing it. It should be 10. That was the consensus direction of the body. 10 overnight occupants for the, for the residential districts in which this will apply. So even if you have a six-bedroom or a five-bedroom with the two plus the sleeper, you're capped at 10 in this draft. And that was based on the direction given by this body. Is there anybody wishing to revisit or address that?
I'm not wild about that, but, you know, one person here. It just seems, as you said, if you've got a six-bedroom house, cap it at 10, it just seems a little counterintuitive. And I'm not sure why, what the rationale would be to cap it. And again, this goes back to something that somebody brought up before about square feet being perhaps a factor in this. But if you've got a house with six bedrooms, presumably large, it's probably got a living room. I mean, that's, I don't know, the 10 just, despite the fact that 10 is a lot of people in the residential neighborhood, I'll, you know, I'll give it that.
Okay, okay.
I still think that if you have a, if you've been allowed to build a house with eight bedrooms, capping it at 10 is a little, as I said, a little counterintuitive.
All right, and I wanna be clear that that occupancy, just in case there's any misapprehension, that occupancy limit applies only for operations as a short-term rental. If you were planning to live there as a single-family home, that occupancy limit does not apply to your, to your occupancy of it. It is for the, for the rental purpose, just 'cause I've seen some misunderstandings in the circulated feedback. The other thing I would note, again, and we would have to revise to remove the reference to the CT, one of the other things that you provided was, for the year after this takes effect, they can have 12 and sort of slowly get the benefit of that. And then after that year, throttle down to the 10 number. So that is, that is still within this, and that's in the best provision appearing on page 16. When we went through this draft the last time, sub C, the owner occupied exception. When we were there, you folks said, I don't think we need an owner occupied exception. But then by the end, when we got to the, when we got to the affidavit that exists to substantiate that, there was revisiting of that notion and a general, it was split. But a consensus, an agreement of the majority, to reestablish or to maintain an owner occupied exception. So that's why that language is here now, should you recall. Oh, I thought we took that out, well, we did. And then we sort of revisited the notion thereafter. And so that's a hat tip to that. The next provision is 18-217, minimum safety and operational requirements and limitations. This is another place where, while the content is largely the same, the layout changed. Again, we had two sections that had required postings. And to avoid, you know, again, acknowledging some of the chief's feedback, we want it as clear as possible so people are looking in one place. And so the feedback here, first, that the safety codes apply, that doesn't change. Quiet hours limitation, it has no persons other than the occupants who've rented, would remain under on the property between quiet time hours. Outdoor amenities was another point of feedback that you've given about no pool, spa, Jacuzzi, or outdoor sports courts on the property may be used by any guest or occupant between those quiet hours. And then the amplified sound restrictions. So that is, is there any feedback on that particular portion or any specific concerns that we have to address? Just on the quiet hours limitation portion.
Captain Liner, I was just gonna ask you about the parking and the noise and, and do you see any limitations or enforcement issues? What are your thoughts on that, specifically to this?
So I just look for clarification here. Clarification on it, is it working? Let's try this again. How's that? How does she help? So I just look for clarification. So these three, this one, two, and three applies to vacation rentals only, correct?
Says the following restrictions shall apply when a property or a unit is in use as a vacation rental.
Okay, yeah, I get that.
Yeah, so it is, it is for vacation rentals only. So the fact that, and I just, I wanna make sure I'm clear on this, too, what's intended by that language, is a vacation rental is defined, for purpose of this ordinance and statute, by at least three rentals of less than 30 days in a year period. So let's say you are functionally a snowbird, but you're gone in the summer months. And so you rent your property from, let's say, May to August in that interval, but you're living there in September, October, November. That provision as written there doesn't apply during that time. However, comma, the amplified sound restriction is coextensive with the language appearing in our noise code. So B sub three is the same language you'll find in our noise code about amplified sound. One and two would really be the changing factor there.
And I did read on the, I did actually catch one. So like, if a homeowner's there, it's not applicable, but if they're renting it, that's where, that's where it applies. Obviously, I'm just trying to get the clarity of what the council wants on that. With something of this magnitude, I would report this back and see operationally how we're gonna handle this. So I just wanted to be, what I'm here for is to make sure I'm clear on what y'all want. So this, this time, what we call it, quiet time, one and two, are for properties being used as potential rentals. So in theory, I guess my question I'm asking, you could have somebody at this property, we send the deputies out, that's in the Jacuzzi at 10:05 at night, that's in violation of this, but someone next door is not a vacation rental, wouldn't necessarily.
As written, yes, that was the consensus direction of this body. Of course, you know, we welcome your feedback on this. I think that the, you know, ultimately, I'll leave that to the policymakers to discuss.
And like I said, I'm just looking one side of the ledger about the reason. Because obviously, something of this magnitude, I'm not gonna be the one making this decision on this. Obviously, it's a huge impact on the community. So I wanna make sure I'm clear, and I'll report back to my boss and say, hey, this, I clarified, this is what they want, and then we'll get you. I just, I know you've got a timetable, we'll get you a response ASAP.
And without putting any words in either Chief Liner or Deputy Liner or the sheriff's mouth, I would say, from a practical standpoint, I will tell you that you're likely to see enforcement of these provisions aligning more with noise and sound than your deputies acting as hotel concierge, telling people to go inside. And that's not the direction he's given me. He didn't tell me to say that. I'm just telling you, in my experience of watching how these kinds of things get administered, that's usually how they get administered. And I would tell you that if you have language that you're just sort of, in any part of this ordinance, and I, I'll draw back from the provision we're discussing. If it's, if it's impractical for you to administer, you don't think, well, we're not actually gonna enforce it that way, then just take it out. Because it puts your folks, your enforcement folks, whether they're your deputies, your co-inspectors, your managers, in a tough position. And I'm not advocating for any version of this ordinance. I'm just telling you, if you're thinking like, oh, well, no harm, no foul, it just probably won't be enforced, but at least it's in there, that's not a good way to write code, generally speaking. Because it puts your administrative, you know, the sort of separation of powers, it puts your executive branch in a rough position. Because they're still going to get called by the neighbors saying, oh, I saw, I heard all the, I sent through all the workshops, I saw it adopted. I called the sheriff and he said, well, they're being pretty quiet back there, and I just told him, please keep it down, but they're still out. And I'm not, again, the sheriff's office has made it very clear that not taking a position, they'll take it back and determine, they are contracted with us, and we have policy positions. But I will tell you, from a practical standpoint, that's more likely how that'll be decided.
I understand there's a lot of concern about late-night pool noise, Jacuzzi noise, that sort of thing. Is that stuff that can be resolved with current noise ordinances?
Sorry, you still have the loud and reckless and all that?
We still have the loud and reckless, we still have the decimal readings in our, in our noise ordinance. So, yes, those will apply equally, those are still of application. So the, yeah, the short answer to your question is yes.
The only thing I would say on that is, operationally, there's a difference between kids in the pool, say, at 5:00 PM versus kids in the pool like midnight or something. So it's along the lines, we talked about taking everything into account. But obviously, it's there, we dealt with stuff like that. And then we're actually doing some sound leader training that takes the subjectivity out of it. That really doesn't apply to, like, people talking and playing. It's more like a noise, like, excuse me, like a music type thing. So I know we've got that in the plans and get some more people trained, so we have to use that, we can apply that. But even if we don't have that, like Randy's talking about, we still have a lot of the Rocky standard that we could apply without that.
Joe, any comments?
I know what we're trying to accomplish here is a practical. And if I'm causing a ruckus per se, which I probably am.
Yes, you have.
I have. Could be. In my opinion, how's that different? We all love a good time in Indian Rock Beach. It's an enforcement provision that's going to be a struggle.
You know, I don't want to have pool police. I really don't. I don't like the idea of pool police. I can see you hanging on a fence, look over, who's in there, get out now, and it just sounds crazy. It just sounds nutty and something that's going to be impossible for you to enforce because they're going to hide from you, and you'll have to get up on the fence and look over again. It just seems fruitless.
What would the commission like to do?
Just to maintain the quiet hours. I'd maintain the quiet hours, but I'd strike the part about the pool.
No pool, spa.
Since we have the noise ordinance, and just assure the deputies who have final call on their own property to see if in fact, what's the, the common man or intelligent man?
Reasonable person standard.
Reasonable person standard, okay. So they're the ones who are going to have to make the call, so.
I'm not too keen on the access limitation one either, because like a dinner party will often go past ten PM. So kind of, I would consider that to fall under same standard there.
And again, if we're talking about the practicality of it, again, not speaking for PCSO, but understanding, having worked with them very closely in officers in other jurisdictions, they're not going to be in a great position to determine who is an occupant, who is not. Say, I think you're lying to me, or, you know. So just add that as a, if you're thinking about it. Again, ultimately, if you folks want it in there, we'll figure it out. But I do want to make sure you're sensitized to those, some of those administrative or practical ordinance.
I mean, if the sound ordinances are all part of the registration and your infractions, then it seems all folded in already, I don't see the need to overcomplicate it.
I would agree. I believe I have consensus direction from the commission to strike within section eighteen two seventeen sub B, striking one and two, preserving the general amplified sound restriction, which by the way, is taken directly from the current noise code and just restated here. So we can leave that. And otherwise, I can make sure, especially given that the removal of those elements, make sure if there's any other elements of the noise ordinance, that they best be restated here or that provision is cross-referenced explicitly. The next is required postings at the unit entrance. I actually made a distinction because within the previous draft, it was like, here's the things you need by the door, and here's things that have to just be somewhere else. And what you've seen that typically is, for example, here's the stuff that's going to be on, within five feet of the exit or on that door versus here's the stuff that's in a binder right by that door. And maybe we include some of the city stuff, and we also include nearby restaurants or whatever else you do, but here's the binder of resources if you need it. But we don't need to make the entire interior look like a billboard. And so the required postings are any owner's conduct rules if they have them, occupancy limitation, the designated responsible party, as noted within the designated responsible party, the noise disturbances, language to respect those quiet hours that we just talked about. And if there is a building of value evacuation, most notably in storm scenario, understanding they have an obligation of the act, we make it that clear as we have guests who are unfamiliar news coverage notwithstanding with what it is to be in those scenarios. And then the additional information that would be provided is the official street address and unit number, if applicable, because not every place is going to have a unit number. A copy of a document to be supplied by the city, which includes city codes and relevant things, just like we've talked in the past, Commissioner Hausberg, where you help provide like, here's your cheat sheet on how things work here. Days and times of trash and recycling pickup, which may be a part of that document. But, you know, some of these may be coextensive. Maximum number of vehicles, phone and address of the nearby hospitals, emergency and non-emergency phone numbers for PCSO and the PSFRD, emergency evacuation instructions and routes. And finally, that currents are prevalent in the Gulf of Mexico and information now, National Weather Service. So those are the, that's the additional information that would be provided. Any questions or concerns about that additions we should?
Greg, when a person comes in for a registration to register their property, do we, do we give them the magnet that Denise, is that part of the package? Or do we do that at this time?
No.
Could we do that?
Yeah, we're going to do that. And then if you recall, I think at the first or second work session that we had, there was a thing, we picked up down in Holmes Beach, this little thing you put in there, it's a little, not larger, but it links you to the, directly to the road. That's, we'll do that in addition to this required posting.
Just so the audience knows, Denise at one time made a five by seven magnet that you can put on your refrigerator. It tells many of the codes, the hours, the noise, all different aspects of things that you need to know about the community. So I'd like to see that that's put in when we do our registration.
One thing I was sitting here thinking about is that, you know, one of the complaints that we hear or did is the topic of golf carts. So I don't know if we need to bring, oh, maybe I'll just, I don't know if we need the list on this official list, a reference to that, you know, in the, in the handouts you're talking about there, that there's a preference in there to golf cart. Just to remind everyone what the rules are, you know, for example, if you have a licensed golf cart, you can drive a golf cart anywhere entirely down Gulf Boulevard. If you're staying in one, it's not licensed, you can only drive it on city streets and cross Gulf Boulevard to get beach access. And so we, I may talk to Randy a little more about this part of it. That's a common thing that we hear at city hall frequently, so I may want to clarify on that.
For the aficionados who have just been following the saga, the manager was referring to the difference between a low-speed vehicle and a golf cart and the different privileges and requirements around those. And that's called it in our ordinance. But Madam Mayor, I believe the deputy chief from the fire district had something else he wished to add.
In an effort to avoid duplication, the building evacuation line five is included in our life safety inspection. So that I would ask that you strike that number five from yours, if that's possible.
Well, if you're also requiring that posting, if the fire district will require that posting as part of its inspection, to me, that redundancy is not an issue. The fact that we're both requiring it, to me, doesn't present an issue. We may wish to note it's add that as also required by PSFRD. If I'm understanding your question right, you're suggesting we're both going to require it. I just want to make sure I understand the concern.
Again, but my thing was, you have the.
They're not going to be able to hear you.
You have the minimum size and all that stuff, like that's not spelled out in ours. So I did want to make sure that one meets our requirements and the other one does not meet your requirements. So we either duplicate this language as stated in here in ours, or it can be removed from yours because it's already going to be a requirement under the life safety inspection that we are requiring.
Understood, and we can work through that before we get to first reading. I don't know that that needs to be resolved here in this moment. My concern is, you see where I have required postings, I talk about font size, font type, size, because what we want to avoid is malicious compliance in the form of, I put it in weight games in six point font, but it's there. You know, it's, you know, just, it's, you do this enough, you try to anticipate too much, and perhaps that's too much. But we can talk through that draft and reconcile what you folks think is sensible, what might be standard based on your knowledge and experience in that, in that area as well. You know, if there's a size that's more commonly used in lodging establishments that you're accustomed to seeing, we can also, you know, align with that. But your point is well taken, and I'll flag that. Are there any other questions or concerns or feedback concerning the required or additional postings in eighteen two seventeen? All right, seeing none, that takes us to parking, solid waste disposal, legal compliance evacuations, miscellaneous provisions. The first is parking. Parking was one of the points that while we were able to move with relative ease through it, the general feedback that was given was, we like the language in from one of the sample ordinances, that is, a spot per bedroom. And so this draft tries to harmonize with that. And how this draft reads, for single and two-family dwellings, one onsite parking spot per each bedroom within each dwelling unit as designated through the vacation rental registration process. Perhaps of less import now that you've taken the CT district out of this. But for multifamily dwellings, it was two spots for one and two bedrooms, and then one per bedroom for every bedroom over three. Whereas in your land development code, as noted in materials provided to you by the manager before this meeting, your land development code, in terms of what they have to put in, in a multifamily is, for three bedrooms and above, it's just three spaces. So whether you have three bedrooms, four bedrooms, or five in a multifamily, it's just three spaces. I think of less important, I'll defer to your manager who's more familiar with the lay of the land. But I wanted to be clear that as written, this is actually requires more parking than the land development code requires when developing a structure of this feature. And with that, Greg, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, you covered it. I just want to make sure that y'all are aware that based on the draft compared to the current ordinance that we have, particularly on multifamily, a multifamily, you know, would be allowed on, in the, of the ordinance, multifamily on the, so property that's owned that would allow multifamily is the right downland development code for three bedrooms or more, like you just said, it's three spaces. So the way this draft is written, it's for three or more, it's one space for bedrooms. There's a difference there, so. And that's like Randy's illustrating there, really, and strictly how you want to do it. But I did want you to understand, that's why I handed you the, the one whole sheet, the differences between the land code and what this draft says.
Is that clear?
But they need to be in agreement, or should they not be in agreement?
Well, I think, I talked to Hedy Harmon about that today. Hedy, for the benefit of the public, is our plant, you know, city planner, contract city planner. And, you know, if you, you think about the most intense residential use that you can have is just multifamily, and three bedrooms or more is capped to three spaces? I asked her about that, we talked through that. And the logic behind that is that there's an assumption that in multifamily, that not everybody's in a car. So, you know, so therefore, that's why it's capped at three. You know, because in vacation rentals, a lot of people that go to vacation rentals, I see, we see them all the time, we see them out on Gulf Boulevard with their luggage. They're getting here by Uber, or they jump buses from spot to spot. So I think that's why zoning ordinance and land development regulations like ours take things like that into consideration, where they, it's just not every single property, you decide you have a four-bedroom multifamily, kind of apartment. It's a logic that not everybody in a four-bedroom is in a car, that's why it's capped at three.
And the other reality that I want to make you folks aware of, again, the draft exists. I looked to the LDC, and Greg and I were specifically cognizant of that difference between the LDC. This draft was based on your consensus direction. One of the other issues you may have, since some of those multifamily properties are built out to the dimensions of the law, parking and otherwise, there may not be space for a fourth or fifth spot. And I, we can talk about how we reconcile or address that, but I do want to make sure you are aware that, it's my understanding, and I'm not independently aware of a specific address, and the lawyer doesn't get on that side of things, but I want to make sure you're aware that that potential could exist where, hey, it's a four-bedroom, we built out three, all their space for is a mailbox in order to put the trash. There's nowhere else to, there's no lawn, you know, great big lawn to sit on.
Is there a benefit to requiring more parking?
Well, the policy discussion that was had last time centered around trying to mitigate the amount of excess parking that may, as a function of this particular use, flow into, congest or otherwise obscure street access. That was at least some of the policy direction that was discussed ultimately. Again, whether or not there's a benefit is for you folks to determine.
I'm wondering if maybe that can't be addressed in some other way.
You let me know.
Yeah.
One other, cookie, one other comment I made, because this was discussed at the last meeting, and Hedy and I talked about this today, is that anywhere in the city where there's required parking, the approval process that would come through the city was wherever the required parking is, it has to basically be on a hard surface. It has to be on shale, concrete, pavement, or asphalt. In other words, if you, whatever you make a requirement, whatever the requirement is, three, four, ten, whatever it is, is that when they go through the approval process to get their required parking approved, do they just keep parking dirt, grass? I've sent some emails from people saying, well, mandate parking, they're just going to just immediately start parking on grass. That's not going to be the ordinance that we have. So I just wanted to put that out there, that whatever required parking we have in the city, it has to be on a surface. And, well, in the, I mentioned this last, the last meeting that I mentioned again, for the sake of the record, is that in the single-family districts that we have, there's no drainage requirements, which I'll tell you is highly unusual, and something probably we should talk about later. The one thing that Hedy does when she reviews a site plan for something in a single-family, there's not drainage requirements, but she looks at the slope of the property, and she does her best to, before she signs off on a project, to make sure that when new construction happens in a residential district, that at least the water that they're going to run off the property does not run off and on the bed of the property. The downside for the city is, then what that means is all the water is going to run off of the street. And then we get, we wind up dealing with, then we just did the updated stormwater plan, so all that factors into it. But I just wanted to say for the record, because it was some discussion back and forth, and I've sent a couple of emails about, well, if you make us have two parking spaces or four, whatever the number, you know, people are just going to park on the grass, no, they're not, because they would have to have an improved surface to do that. And my only other comment that I made in previous to work sessions is, you know, sometimes you get to think about what you're asking for, because particularly residential areas that we're all sensitive to, and the changes in residential areas, if you're too stringent on parking requirements, you'll alter the, you'll further alter the appearance and feel of looking at the property, because if you go too far with that, you know, they're like anybody else, they've only got a certain spot to put the required parking, which has been a hard surface, and I think we all know where that's going. It's going in the front yard, side yard, or, but just particularly want to address that there are requirements for parking, and you just can't park, for the required parking especially, you just can't park on the grass.
Okay.
Is anyone feeling there's a benefit to having enhanced parking requirements per bedroom other than what's required currently already? I mean, I know that there's a, there's a goal, but is this the way to get there? Since we're all talking. And I'm not sure why, I'm not sure what the benefit of adding the extra required spots would be, particularly as Greg was saying, if we're going to have everybody start, every one of these short-term rental properties is going to start paving their front yards. So, which of course is also going to increase for a lot.
We worked eighteen months on the parking ordinance.
It was before me, then.
Well, maybe what we should do is get you a copy of it.
Greg, this needs to be on this evening, I actually have one. Doesn't mean I agree.
Well, I mean, and just to read it over, I mean, that'd be delicious or anything like that.
I have.
What is, what is, any comments from the rest of the commission?
I, you know, we probably just revert back to the land development code on the parking, you know, two spaces for single-family and duplex, and for multifamily. you know, two spaces for single-family duplex, and for multi-family, two spaces for two-bedroom, and three spaces for three or more.
If, if I'm not mistaken, if people come in with more cars than fit there, they simply won't have a place to put them.
They park them on the street. And that's, that's what we were trying to reduce.
Yeah.
But I don't know if we can. Jeff?
No.
I mean, because I know parking on the streets is a problem for Jeff, too.
Yes.
Well, for everybody.
One.
So, I mean, we don't want them parking on the streets, we don't want them parking on grass, we don't want water on cement.
We don't want them to break cars.
We don't want them to break cars.
Yeah, we want the right number of cars for the size of the house.
That's right, yeah. Well, we continue to evaluate streets that are having issues, am I correct, Greg? We had a list, um, and...
We're, we're through evaluating streets. Yeah, we, you know, we're, we're obviously always open to complaints that we receive, uh, but, you know, I know what year it was, it was several years ago, we went through the exercise and had work sessions about the beach, and beach parking, and as a result, uh, fourteen is installed probably several hundred no parking signs, and we get very few complaints now about regular, routine parking, but we have gotten complaints on a handful of properties about, you know, vacation rentals, got four or five bedrooms, and they wind up in the afternoons with, you know, like fifteen cars out in front, or fifteen cars in the driveway, and, uh, but, but the, the parking areas are really from, if you think about the map of the city, it's really from, like, Bay Boulevard over to Gulf Boulevard, kind of that width all the way down, and that's pretty well worked, that's worked pretty well for us.
Thanks.
And then the cul-de-sacs, most of the cul-de-sacs now, there may be one or two that we've not missed, because the chief, the, the sheriff, or the previous chief, sent me an email, and most of the cul-de-sacs now are no parking, there may be one or two that are not, because that's where the concern was, you get the dentistry, you can't make the turn on the cul-de-sac. There's, you know, there's gonna be a couple times a year, uh, New Year's Eve, particularly boat parade nights, where people were just parked all over, but that's a, that's an exception, but we don't, other than the complaints that we get, the handful of complaints that we get with, uh, really like probably eight or ten larger vacation rentals, we do not, we don't get a lot of parking complaints. One of the, one of the things that we, we did prior to even the first work session in the fall, we probably, I, I probably, we probably admitted this a couple of years ago, is that just to limit where people are parking throughout the town, there's a provi- there was an existing provision in the, in the city code that said that you couldn't block a mailbox in the direction I gave, our code people, uh, the, the sheriff, they handle them differently, but when our code people are out there, we have two code people, so we have two guys out seven days a week, the instruction that they've been given is that basically if they're on a city street, and there's a vehicle parked on the street where a postal, uh, truck cannot access the mailbox, that's about a car length or a little more, you're gonna get, you're gonna get cited for that. And that's, that's, that's helped, just because the word's gotten out. So if you think about, in the point I'm making with that, if you think about a city street where mailboxes are, if, if, and this is not in the current ordinance, the current vacation rental ordinance, it's in the city, it's been there for years, is that if you can't block a mailbox, it really limits where you park on the street, because there's mailboxes in front of every lot, and you've got some space there. That's one of the houses that we've had some trouble with, uh, in, on a Friday afternoon, and, and turned, and then turned into Saturday event, is that for the same property, that's just one, one property, and this is not a widespread thing, I think for the same property, uh, for, for two-day period with like eight parking tickets from the same house, because they can't block in the mailbox, block in the driveway, but that's the exception, we don't, we don't get along that. I know you asked me a question, but I just thought it was important to kind of explain what I'm saying.
So where we stand at this point, I wish, so far, I, I think Member Hausberg has been very clear that the parking restrictions, as much as they exist, should be in alignment with the current, uh, language within the land development code for the LDC. I welcome the remaining members' feedback, so I can be clear on the consensus direction.
So, so where's the, so is the conflict in the multi-family or the single-family?
Principally in the multi-family, so a single-family, it, it's in both, because the way the single-family, two-family dwellings, we, under the current code, it's, if you have a single-family, it's two spaces. Here we're saying it's one onsite parking space per each bedroom, which can get you beyond two. Um, this, this provision, however, does exclusively contemplate that, um, available garage space is part of that count.
Correct.
Um, and then the, it, to the extent it's multi-family, which can exist within the districts that are still being regulated, that's where the, the biggest conflict is, because under the land development code, the LDC, it's capped at three, whereas here it has a one-to-one relationship to the number of bedrooms. Um, so that's where, to the extent there's a disparity, that's the biggest one.
Okay. Um, I don't have a problem with the space per bedroom personally. Um, you got a three-bedroom house, even though in some of our small beach houses, you know, a three-two, there's gonna be a garage plus two on a single drive, that's easy to fit three cars. Uh, I would expect four-bedroom or five-bedroom home to have at least do a wide driveway plus garage, that in my mind would not be tough to fit five cars in that. Um, I think the vacation rentals actually present a different opportunity, uh, than a family, right? You may have both parents that have both cars, maybe a toy, but bottom line, if I got four people coming for a four-bedroom, or five people coming for a four-bedroom, they're, if they're couples, or this, that, or the other, they're bringing a car, for the most part. Um, can't say absolutes, uh, but I don't have a problem with the way it's written. I think, um, that creates more cars, um, that those homes should have that, and it really shouldn't be that much of a compliance issue. Um, as far as the multi-family, I think it's minimal, um, that could be something that we do to the land use code, because bottom line, um, uh, multi-families are gonna create a separate parking issue, right? Just because of, like you said, they're built to the, they're built to the end, right? You can park underneath, it depends their development. Um, that I can see with multiple bedrooms having a harder time complying. Uh, but as far as the single-family, I, I think most houses would, could work that in without paving their front yard. Maybe widening the drive, at most. Just my opinion.
Any more comments? Are we good with what's up?
Are we gonna catch on fire? Joe, would people start paving their, their front yards?
What are we agreeing to here?
Well, so far, Member Hausberg has said she'd prefer to see this provision harmonized to the LDC. Member McCall says they think, he thinks it's generally fine, though recognizing, um, there may be potential limits for certain properties which can be addressed through special exceptions or otherwise, honestly. Uh, but the, um, I, I don't have consensus direction from the remaining three members.
I mean, bottom line, we can't stop that now. If you want to pave your, your front yard?
But, but requiring, but requiring...
Well, well, then you're right to do so.
Requiring, uh, to do it is, is...
That's one of the concerns, is requiring the additional parking spaces, and then people go crazy with getting concrete in their front yard, and then changing the look and feel of the whole neighborhood.
Great. But you did just put an occupancy limit, right? So the twenty cars showing up, and that we'd have a problem with, you know, that, we put that limitation in, so that should push down on that parking piece. Am I right?
Yes.
Greg, direct it to you, if somebody were going to go in, or was going to go in and, and pave their parking, and their, their yard for example, isn't there an impervious thing as far as water draining and so forth? No?
In the single-family district, and that's, that's, you know, brought, brought it up in every work system we have, in our single-family district, which is the majority of the area of the western, there's no drainage requirements. All the water is dumped on the street. If, and that's why I was saying earlier, what Hedy does out of courtesy to neighbors, try and make it from going on the neighbors, but it all runs out on the street.
Okay, thanks.
Member Hannah, do you have any, because since you're the last to speak, do you have any direction on which parking arrangement you prefer, whether it be the LDCs or some other version?
Well, I'm kind of mixed. I agree with the consistency of the LDC, but equally, half the problem I have, there is just so many cars on our roads right now, and, uh, with that, I'd probably, I'd probably go more LDC than what, I'm, I'm okay with the way that.
No, maybe.
Yes.
If I could ask.
Sure. Yes. You need to speak into the mic.
I'm sorry, I'm not very used to working with microphones.
Yes.
I'm not used to it, so I gotta yell.
Okay.
So you can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure on the expectations out of all this again. On, I guess it's page nineteen, the permissible parking locations, I, I get, obviously, why you're all diminished and stuff, but I'm just trying to think what, what the expectations are of us. Uh, uh, do you expect, say, somebody calls, typically it's to be at night, because they're causing more noise than I do. So if they call, and there's ten cars on the street, is the expectation of us to go out and identify who those ten cars belong to, and then if one room's a rental, like, I would assume somebody'd tell us, like, these cars pulled up, and a couple went into that house. Okay, we can start there, but do we verify the other cars, and then if they're in violation, we're looking at an ordinance violation for, I guess, the owner or the, whatever. I'm just trying to figure out what you have to expect us to do, so I can tell the deputies, obviously, if that makes sense. I might have a problem with that.
Only if they're blocking the mailbox.
So, so, and it's the, the parking, for us, that's easy, because obviously, you see, you're parked in front of a mailbox.
Yeah.
Um, and I get what Greg was saying, obviously, about parking on concrete, and I'm just trying to make it so I can give the direction to the deputies, and they're doing what y'all want.
Well, I, I would like to just intercheck, so there's some understanding here. What we're, what we're talking about has two components to, right? Because part of this is the minimum required parking as part of the vacation rental registration process, right? So you, what your folks are, are legislating here is, in order to legitimately operate, lawfully operate, a short-term rental in the, in the city of Indian Rock Beach, what is the minimum parking requirement for your property to get signed off and approved? That's what's here. Now, if somebody's parking unlawfully, that's unto itself sort of a, a, an over and above element, but what we're, what we're trying to most specifically address here is, when they come to sign up, we, they need to show us that they've planned accordingly, right? And, and planned accordingly, part of it is all the reg- required boostings and all of that. One element of this, uh, going back to the vacation rental registration submission, included an application with different contents, an exterior site plan, an interior site plan, another element of that was your parking plan. And so what they need to know is, well, if I'm submitting a parking plan, how do I know if my parking plan is in compliance before I submit it? I don't want it to, we, we don't wish for it as a city to be arbitrary, we want to make sure that it's clear what's expected of, of an applicant. And so in this context, having what the requirement is, when you submit your parking plan, we expect you to show us X. And Commissioner Hausberg has said, I expect it to conform to the LDC. Commissioner McCall, he says, I like the language there. Uh, Commissioner Hannah's could be persuaded either way, and so I, at this point, I'm still looking for consensus direction from, uh, the bottom.
Let's go with LDC.
There you go.
How about you, Madam Mayor?
LDC.
Okay, so, following that conversation, the minimum required parking for a vacation rental will conform to the minimum required parking, uh, for the structure based on that requirement already existing in the LDC. Uh, that's, that's how that would be in, uh, in the next draft. And of course, um, this is still part of the legislative process, if for some reason you revisit that on first reading or beforehand, um, you know, of course, this, this remains ongoing. Uh, the permissible parking locations, I think, would, you would still, um, conform, subject to making sure that that is, um, consistent with the LDC, and I'll work with the planner to make sure, if they don't count garage spaces or whatever, that we, we address accordingly. Um, the next provision is solid waste disposal, which just says, you gotta abide by whatever your trash day is. Um, the next is just, you still have to abide by the law over there. Um, again, evacuation, I'm underscoring again, that, um, vacation rentals are required to participate in all mandatory evacuations. Uh, the last is the temporary use permit, and we talked about that for a little while during the last one, um, that, uh, if you're the owner of a property, because that, that has a rental registration, you can apply, but it's unlawful for you to, to apply on behalf of a guest or a tenant, it's for your use, um, not for the, you know, not for short-term rentals to come and have those temporary use permissions. And we address storage, and we address the, um, uh, limitations on permissible rental, I believe. This was in the last draft, the Sub G to eighteen dash two eighteen, there was some comment made that it was not addressed, I want to just read the language in case there's any misapprehension. No accessory structure, shed or an outbuilding, uh, vehicle, recreational vehicle, trailer, camper, boat, yacht, or similar apparatus shall be utilized or rented as a vacation rental, or used to impermissibly provide sleeping quarters, or otherwise accommodate more than the permitted number of occupants, overnight occupants on a property when used as a vacation rental. So if you get ten occupants, it's not ten plus whatever you shove in the RV, it's ten occupants. Um, that's, and I, I do believe there was some, some revision of that language, to bolster that second element, but that, that language exists there. Um, are there any other questions within eighteen dash two eighteen? Okay, eighteen dash two nineteen, I know there was some public feedback, uh, and, and I believe even some commissioner inquiry, uh, following the circularly draft, this language did exist in the past, and what I want to make very clear is, this does not prevent you from saying in your listing that you have a pool, or you have a recording studio, or you have a tennis court. What this specifically prevents is marketing and renting that separate from the entirety of the structure. And that language exists there in that last clause, or otherwise renting or leasing individual amenities, features, or accessory buildings or structures on the property, separate or apart from the primary structure. Uh, there are, uh, platforms that exist for partially carving up your property into rentable elements, this seeks to avoid that. Similar language has been adopted in other communities in Pinellas and in the state, addressing that phenomenon, uh, there's, and so that's what that aims to do. This is not saying you can't acknowledge the actual design and structure of your property, just that you can't rent out individual elements, you're renting out the property.
Yes.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
So what you're saying is, like, I, you can't, like, if I got a boat slip, I can't say, hey, bring your boat, your friends can stay on the boat.
Uh, my, no, I, I, what I'm saying here is actually a little different from that. It's, I don't plan to rent my home, but I'm happy to rent my pool for two hours.
Oh.
That side, taking an individual amenity and carving it off from the property, or I'm willing to rent out my backyard for birthday parties, I'll be in the house, you guys have no use of the house, you're only renting out the backyard, or something of that sort. This seeks to make it so you have to have the rental be for the primary structure, not for individual elements on the property.
I have a question about that. As far as often, of course, in Airbnbs, people rent out just part of the structure, or one room, or say a wing, or the mother-in-law, or the mother-in-law cottage. If, in the case of, say, a mother-in-law cottage, how would that be affected?
Well, there, what you're looking at most more likely than not is an owner-occupied rental. I'm occupying the house, you can have the out parcel or the outbuilding.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in that case, as drafted, there's an owner-occupied exception that carves that out, so that's how that would handle that. And you could still, and, and same true, usually if you're just renting a room, it's , oh, I have this part of the house, you guys get the room in the back left corner, um, so that's how that's handled.
What about two separate, for example, Airbnb rentals, one for the main house, one for the mother-in-law?
That would not be prohibited. You would have, the way we operate is, there's one rental of that, or you are renting out the house, not the accessory structure.
Hmm. How do you guys feel about that?
Fine.
You know, there's that app where you can rent out your pool by the hour, actually.
This is, this, this language is designed with that.
What am I gonna, my, my?
Not, 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 not a particular platform in mind, but with that phenomenon in general. Um, is, that is precisely what it's seeking to address. If that's not something this community wishes to address, by all means, let me know, we'll take it out. It's up to you, folks. I give you resources, you tell me what you want.
Five minutes.
All right, the consensus direction is to maintain the language, this is there. Um, eighteen dash two twenty, minimum life safety requirements, and again, um, for the benefit of Deputy Chief and Chief, uh, I, in the interest of getting this out, I cannot run just full disclosure... out, I cannot run just full disclosure to all present. I didn't specifically run this language by Chief. Of course, we're here now, and as we continue to harmonize other provisions, if there's any term of art that I've used that doesn't align with, you know, I'm requiring something over and above what is commonly required. Chief, early on in the process, gave me some feedback on the kinds of extinguishers that would or would not be required and the like, and I tried to harmonize to that. But generally speaking, this is to call out the, and I'm forgetting the term you used earlier, but the life safety codes, the fire prevention code in its current iteration sort of requirements. And that's what's intended to be recognized here. And so where you see things like exit nine-inch fire extinguisher, carbon monoxide, and battery-powered emergency item, all of that was based on what PSFRD, the general direction I understood PSFRD are going. We're not, I did not, the intention of this draft, to go over and above that and require things that they're not. So Chief, is there anything else you wish to add to that, having muted?
No, I think you hit everything, and, you know, again, we're going to be rolling out this program if it's going to tax our inspection personnel, we're going to actually have to add a person down the road when we can, but we're going to be looking, we're looking to work with the owners and the residents to do this, to make sure everything's a simple. You know, I'll have some checklists spelled out for them ahead of time, here's the things that you need, we'll be able to assist in any way possible and try to make it as easy as possible for them.
And it's drafted this way, you know, there is another way to do this, where you could just say, well, we're doing whatever they're doing. The concern there is, again, communicating those clear expectations, while there may be an over and above harassment, adding head language, saying that PSFRD, as the city's contracted fire department may, or establish, whatever the language is, may require and shall be compliant with that as well. And it may be well-placed, but I think it's better to have some of those clear expectations to accept and know, um, enumerated here, so that's what that does. Any questions or concerns on that provision?
I got one additional thing.
Yes, sir.
69A-43 outlines the Florida Fire Prevention Code, minimum life safety requirements for one to two.
What is it again, 69?
69A-43. Are you familiar with that one? I don't know if we might.
Old classic, love that one.
Yeah. But something like, I don't know if that should be referenced in there, again, if they modify that document, or do we need to make reference to 69A-43 in there? Because they've already set some minimum standards to which these.
And so, and again, I think this is another one of those inside baseball moments where we can, you know, resolve that on the back end, either determine what those requirements presently are, or give the, acknowledge that provision, and based on what our draft is, and what the direction yours is moving in, harmonize those, but we can look to the Florida Fire Prevention Code's contents in 69A-43 and make sure we're consistent with those, to be sure.
Okay, we're good.
All right. 18-221, and for those following along or just wanting to know, when will you stop talking? We are on page 21 of 23, exemption for pre-existing rental agreements. This is, I think there was some misunderstanding about what this language does and does not do. Once this ordinance is adopted, it will have an effective date, and it will apply to all rentals within whatever districts you determine that it will apply to after your second reading. It will apply effective that date, and it will set forth the timelines for coming into compliance and applying and all of that. If a party is presently operating a vacation rental within a district where this is applying, they're not exempted from this. There's no grandfathering out. This isn't an opt-out thing, and we're not requiring any beyond the fire safety and pool safety requirements, we're not requiring structural modifications substantially here. We're requiring principally registration, accountability, and, you know, and the other, and required postings and the like. So there's no, this exemption is not, if you're renting now, it's not going to apply. The exemption is for the provision of this article, to the extent any newly adopted term in this article conflicts with the term of a pre-existing agreement entered into before its adoption. So let's say, and I'm not establishing a timeline, you're not quoting me on dates, let's say this is adopted May 15th, or June 1st, let's go June 1st. But I, right now, am a super responsible person who's already booked my stay in December of this year, and I'm going to be in excess of an occupant, I'm going to have 14 instead of the 12 that I'm going to have for this one year. Well, then that's, I can say, like, yes, I legitimately do have 14 guests, but that was entered into before your provision. We're not trying to interfere with contracts that were entered into before the adoption of this ordinance. That's all this does. This is not a safe harbor provision such that if you were operating law, and by the way, it requires you to have been lawfully operating prior to that, under our current rules. You can't just pop up and say, oh, I've been renting for two years. Well, you weren't registered for two years. So that's a problem in itself. But, and it goes into how you establish, it might be that you get cited for an ordinance violation based on, hey, you were in violation, but your defense is, here's the proof that this was booked in April, and you didn't adopt it till June, you have this provision, there's some elements, copy of deposit, copy of email, information from the occupant confirming that there was a binding agreement, written vacation rental, those sorts of things. Sort of akin to, for those of you who have the great fortune of being familiar with the red light camera process, you're issued a violation based on the driver's license and registration associated with the license plate. And you could say, it wasn't me, it was my kid, or I rented it out to a friend, this is their problem. You can provide evidence and rebut that presumption, but the presumption starts with, this was a violation. Or you could say, oh, I was getting out of the way of an ambulance, I, you know, some proof of it, even though it's not in the video you see. And so there's things you can do in those contexts, the same is true here. And so that's how that, how that works. But that's, you know, that's where the, what that exemption is for. It's not a safe harbor provision. If you're lawfully operating today, that after June 1st, you just can ignore objects. That's not what this says. So I hope that was clear, I know I kind of rambled. Are there any questions or concerns from the commission on that? Okay? And then the last part of this, page 22 of 23, as it relates to the ordinance, 23 is the standard, you know, this is how this is drafted, this is, you know, severance clauses and all that stuff. So page 22 of 23 is the final provision. This was the exemption for owner-occupied vacation rentals, and the affidavit that you would use to establish that exemption. And, excuse me, any feedback on that, or any revisiting of that from members of the commission?
No, looks good.
So Mayor, we've completed the review page by page of the ordinance in its current draft. I do have the consensus direction. During our last occasion to convene about this stuff, we then went to the public, and I will defer to you as the presiding officer as to how we proceed.
Okay, at this time, we will open up to public comment. Every person will be given three minutes. You will state your name and your address. There will be no slanderous remarks made to the commission, and all comments will be about this issue. So at this time, if there's anyone who would like to come forward and speak, we would love to have you come forward.
And for those who are on Zoom, remember to unmute yourself once you've been acknowledged and ready to go here.
And what we'll do is, we'll go back and forth. I'm going to start with Don, and then I'll go to Sue, and that's okay with everyone.
Hi, Don House. Mayor, one second. Member McCall's taking a rest, taking a public break. Since we've been going for a while, do you want to proceed, or do you wish to?
No, no, let's proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Don.
All right, Don House, 21 and 4 weeks ago. It's kind of like chasing a greased pig, and whatever is happening, how it has to change. But I want to compliment the commission tonight, and I agree with Randy first, that's the dang good-looking guy on the screen right now, so anyway.
Hey, if you could just enter the mic a little bit better, sorry, it's just.
That is the dang good-looking guy on the screen right now. Anyway, I want to compliment the commission a lot, say our things tonight. I have been, I've been talking to business owners, people that own short-term rentals, people that are right around, people that hate them, and it all boils down to the noise. I think that y'all are making a big, big, big step to control that and apply, if you really enforce the noise ordinance. I think you've solved almost all the problems you got here. Couple things here. One about the, getting the occupancy square footage, I think definitely should be a factor on that, whether it's more at 2,000 square feet, 5,000, you know, I actually should actually really factor in square footage on this, just on the side of bedrooms. Houses that were built and are that large, were built with city permission, with city permits, we have to take that into consideration. The older houses, we have some older houses that have been modified with permission, totally legal, and are nowhere near parking space meeting, meeting the number of parking spaces. So anything that's been permitted, and old houses, we have to have consideration for the grandfather and on that. I really, when I was talking to people that own short-term rentals, I talked to a group that owns a bunch of, or represents a bunch of them, and they were very dismayed that the city would not meet with them, as they were, as y'all were developing this ordinance, that we're meeting with the people that were affected by, from the residential, people that, not by the short-term rental owners, and that was a little dismaying. But, so it was kind of one-sided, that was just there. I did make a public service records request for all the problems that had been occurring so we could find out where the problem houses are. There was, nothing was forthcoming. Mike Kelly said, we don't have certain files on these houses, we just know where the bad houses are. The city needs to clean that up, make sure that they know and can enforce what the bad, what the bad houses are, so that makes it really, in a, so you've got a good record for when you're talking about a bad house. When the licenses, we talked about, they cannot get their license until the inspections. We should say, if they apply, they have to have time. If 200 of these happen at one time, I don't think there's any government around that can do 200 inspections in a couple of weeks. So if they've applied, we'll assume they have the license until such time, until they can get an inspection, and then correct in short, give them a short time to correct anything that's wrong there. I guess my three minutes is up, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Very much, thank you. Hi, Erica. Hello, good evening. Oh, one, one second.
Madam Mayor, I'm the one who made this call.
Okay, all right, thank you, Erica.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Thank you, commissioners and city staff, Mr. Menz, Mr. Mora as well, thank you all.
Excuse me, Erica, I need your address.
I'm sorry, 534 Harbor Drive North. Erica Dees, sorry. I really have one main concern I hope you can consider, and that is with regard to the designated responsible person. Completely understand that when there's a problem in a house, noise or otherwise, we want to have a good response time. But speaking personally and for many owners, the 24/7 response time within one hour is just not physically or biologically possible. That would mean not sleeping. I've mentioned before that I think it might be a good idea to consider a hot phone tied to some kind of answering service. This way, it would, it would allow for 24/7 availability. A hired answering service company could be, could answer the phone anytime. We could also, as a city, come up with standardized verbal responses based on situations, so those answerers could be trained how to respond to various situations, just as our 911 call centers are. Similarly, standardized action responses, contacting the appropriate authorities, or whatever might be, you know, appropriate to this specific call. Importantly, considering the code we're trying to adopt, it would also allow us to easily track the source of those calls, as well as what subsequently transpired and what the outcome was, very similar to a 911 situation. You have to say who you are calling, what's the problem, what's the address, and then also, there's some kind of record for what happened. If the city is looking, as it says in the current template, to ask people to keep a record for up to two years of all these things, why not put that on an answering service that we could pay? So this, to me, makes a lot more sense than trying to ask an owner like myself to stay up 24 hours a day and cite me for violations if I don't answer with an hour. That's just going to be really difficult. If I have one more second, I may have misunderstood, but with regard to parking, such in 18-218, number two, the permissible parking location currently says, all people and visitors must be parked within a driveway or parking area located on the premises, which I think we might have stricken that with the Land Use Code, but if not, that would also be impossible, I would think, so hopefully we clarify that. Thank you again so much for all the effort.
Rob?
Rod Baker, 364 Bohia Vista Drive. I call your attention to the occupancy ordinance. I would encourage you to consider square footage, big difference between a 3-2 and a thousand square feet or 3,000. One thing you could do would be two bedrooms plus two, max 10, up to 1990, and then 12 above 2,000 square feet, and here's why. For our business.